Eighteen to twenty-five, so paragraph three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares.
So declared. Is there a second?
Second.
How do you vote, Priscilla?
Yes.
Chase?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And I vote yes, and we will reconvene in open session. (inaudible) Nine o'clock. I work from the twenty, because I am on the sidewalk, but on my way back now. Could you please stand for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, on the agenda this evening, six thirty-five, which we've gone past, we do have a public hearing on a pole petition, National Grid on Podunk Road. We have a request for a one-day liquor license from Hamilton Rod and Gun Club. We have change in our request of alcohol from Ulsterbridge Village. We have a request to review from Doughty Road Escape Estates regarding their assessment of privileges, fee, privilege fees for SOR. Then we have Gordon Holstrom requesting, a request for continued service for the fire department. Town administrators update, old business, new business, correspondence, approval of minutes, citizens forum, and then we will adjourn. We should do the public hearing, seeing as we're a little late, and then we'll jump back to public service announcements. Is there someone here? Okay, would you please?
Assigning please.
There's a signing sheet.
I don't know how to tell your name.
It's true.
You have the notice.
I have the notice, whenever you're ready for me.
Well, wait. Don't want to interrupt you. Okay, Mary, put me in the notice, please.
Public hearing notice for a pole location on Podunk Road. In conformity with the requirements of section twenty-two, chapter one sixty-six of the general laws, you are hereby notified that a public hearing will be held at the office of the Board of Selectmen in the town of Sturbridge, Mass. on the second of July at six thirty-five o'clock PM upon the petition of National Grid for permission to erect or construct and a location for a line of wire poles and such other fixtures as may be necessary to sustain or protect the wires of the line for the transmission of electricity upon, along, across, or under the following public ways of said town or city, Sturbridge. National Grid has made a petition to the Sturbridge Board of Selectmen to install one SO pole on Podunk Road, beginning at a point approximately one thousand two hundred and eighty-five feet south of the center line of the intersection of Podunk Turnpike. National Grid to install one new thirty-five-foot CT pole sixty-six dash one, approximately forty feet on the same side from existing pole sixty-six, and approximately one thousand two hundred and eighty-five feet from the closest intersection of Podunk Turnpike. This work will be installed for the new customer at two thirty, Podunk Road. The hearing will be held on Monday, July two, two thousand eighteen, at six thirty-five PM, Sturbridge Town Hall, three oh eight Main Street, Sturbridge, Mass.
Okay, and could you please introduce yourself for the audience at home and?
Yes, Steve Susie, designed for National Grid. Like, the petition says, we just need to install a new pole in order to serve two thirty, Podunk Road. The customer wants an on-the-ground service, and we can't, the nearest pole is in front of two thirty-two, so we need to just have a new pole which would be at or near the lot line to two thirty, and so they can have it on-the-ground service. The, just measured from where the, today, from where the lot line is, there's, that lot line is like twenty-five feet off, you know, the, the road, pavement edge, and the pole was staked around ten feet off the pavement edge.
Okay, any questions from the board? No questions? It's a public hearing, so anyone?
I just had one question. So the pole's going to be ten feet off the pavement?
Well, that's where it was staked today, but they were paving today, so I don't know if someone took the stake if it was closer.
Did we put that in the actual petition?
No.
See, I thought we were trying to put those in the petition from now on, because, you know, our DPW director wanted the pole so far off the road.
The DPW director has reviewed the?
No, I know, but I thought we were gonna, we, up in, we've tried to put the language in the petition and in the order itself, I thought.
I thought that was on any pole, that we had a question about it in the set.
Period. I thought we tried to put the setback in writing.
We can, we can check on that.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. I didn't have that on my.
Yeah, 'cause they, we had language, we shall use reasonable, they shall use reasonable efforts to make it da-da-da-da, where possible. I remember drafting the language myself.
But he has no problem with us.
Great. I know he doesn't have a problem, but we've always seen, I still lied to, and made it in the, in the writing.
So Leon can go back and double-check on that, and we can?
But we can make that in the motion.
Yeah, that's all.
Yeah.
And then make sure on, any others who come forward. Mike?
Yeah, I, I thought, actually, that the, the distance off the pavement was going to be noted on the, the location plan, the pole, pole location plan that gets recorded with the order.
If that's, we can do that in the future. I, yeah, I didn't design this. Somebody who's, who's going to come here was sick, so I'm presenting it, but if there's something in the future you need to add that, I'll make sure that everyone knows, so you can add that.
Yeah, whether there was a, yeah, because when it's on, when it's on paper, then everybody's on the same page, whether or not the DPW director had a problem with this location.
And even now, because that road is being paved today, so I, I can't tell exactly how far, could've, I, I don't know the status before the new tower was put down, so.
I would, you know, I would just like, in the future, and this is what I thought we were going to get, is noted on the pole petition plan, the distance from, minimum distance that the pole will be from the pavement, yeah, edge of pavement.
And we can add that in the future.
If you add that in the future, we'd really appreciate it.
Okay.
And I, I believe that plan gets recorded with the order, right?
With the, the petition itself, yes, that we keep our files and you would have your files as well.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that has a question or a comment? Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, five to nothing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anybody want to make a motion then about the pole with the conditions?
Those who had the conditions, let, I would defer to those.
All right. I'll make a motion that we approve the petition for pole and wire locations set forth by National Grid on Podunk Road, and that they be no less than ten feet off of the pavement, if possible.
If, in, in this case, we can. For other roads, that might not be, but in this case, it does seem so.
That you can.
And with no problem. In this case, yes.
Yes, I know, but that's what the motion is for this case.
Oh, okay, that would be fine.
No, you didn't vote it.
No, we didn't vote. Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay, any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion? Okay.
Happy fourth.
You too.
It's not going to be notarized until later, so is that a problem? Can, can you get it?
No, that's fine. That's typically what happens, is that they nail us the, the notarized copy to our work support that, you know, catalogs that and, you know, puts it in the file, so that would be fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just taking a minute here to sign. Okay, while we're signing, I can start the public service announcements. The town hall and center office building now has new hours, beginning today, Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday. The offices will be open eight to four Tuesday.
Are you there?
Yeah, I got it, but I, I condense it.
Okay.
Tuesday, the offices will be open eight to seven, and Friday, offices will be open eight to twelve. Okay. Priscilla, any public service announcements?
I don't.
Chase?
I don't.
Mike?
I don't.
Mary?
I just want to wish everybody a happy and healthy Fourth of July on Wednesday, and for our country.
Yes.
Madam Chair, in your agenda package, I just had one other one. It was kind of a timely one, given the gypsy moth infestation that we have. In our, in your agenda package, I've given a, an update from Tom Chamberlain, the tree warden, regarding the gypsy tro, gypsy moth tree mortality. I've since posted this on our town's website, sent it through our town administrator's blog and the town's Twitter page. I just wanted people to be aware of the, of the article. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Let's see, I've got to check these out. Okay, next, we have a request for a one-day liquor license, Hamilton Rod and Gun Club. Good evening. Did you sign in earlier, or?
Nope, I'll do that right now.
Okay, would you please introduce yourself?
Laurie Jesky. I'm representing the Hamilton Rod and Gun Club. We are looking for, it's actually two one-day liquor licenses for our, for the Milltown Hot Rod, Rat Rod Show. That is going to be August third and fourth. This is the eighth year that they are hosting it on our grounds, and that we are coming to this.
Okay, and we have a thing from the police chief, that he does not have any concerns in all the parking.
I'm, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
The date is wrong, is, our date is wrong on our?
On your application, you had August third and August eighth.
Oh, I, it should've been Aug, yeah, it's the third and fourth. It's that Friday, Saturday.
August third and fourth.
Sorry, that was.
Okay.
Oh, I thought it was two separate.
Yeah, no, sorry, it's that Friday and Saturday. Sorry, typo on my part.
That makes more sense.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, that was, yeah, all the work we're going in, we're not doing it over two separate.
I was going to say, very short.
Actually, that wasn't a Saturday, so you'd be doing it on a, on a Thursday.
But I'll be, um.
See, just feeling with this is.
You know, it'll go fine.
It'll, yes.
Everything's going to be shut down, there'll be no target shooting or anything that day, because the parking's on the.
No, the grounds, completely get shut down for all shooting during that entire weekend, yes.
Okay, does anybody on the board have a question? Does somebody want to make a motion then?
I'll make a motion that the selectmen approve the one-day liquor license application for an event occurring, occurring on August third and August fourth at the Hamilton Rod and Gun Club, as presented at tonight's meeting.
Okay, do you want to put the times to, oh, they requested it fourth?
Eight AM to one AM.
On the third, it's noon to one AM.
Okay, right. From noon to one AM on Friday, August third, and from eight AM to one AM on August fourth.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, five to nothing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next, we have a request from Ulsterbridge Village for a change in the service of alcohol.
Dennis Santelli.
Okay, could you sign, please, and then?
If you approve it, you can sign.
Okay, could you please give your name into the mic, please? It's for the people at home.
Absolutely. It's Dennis Santelli. I'm the general manager of food and beverage dining services at Ulsterbridge Village.
Okay. And your request is just to, on Sunday, serve, starting at ten, as opposed to the old standard of eleven?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, any questions from the board?
You identified yourself as the manager?
Yes.
And on the application, we've got Lisa?
Lisa Giddix is the manager of the Oliver White Tavern. She's the license holder, yes.
Okay.
But I got a confirmation from a Leon Gomo in an email stating that anybody could attend the meeting here.
She was, I just wanted to make sure that?
Yes.
Who, in fact, was the manager, that's all.
Yes.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Somebody willing to make a motion?
I don't have to read the public hearing notes?
Well, it's not really a public hearing. Leon didn't mean to.
I did it as a public hearing when it wasn't required.
Oh, it was not? Okay.
Not for change in hours.
Well, I'll make a motion to change the starting time for the service of alcohol at Ulsterbridge Village from eleven AM to ten AM.
On Sundays.
On Sundays.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do I need a certificate or anything, or?
What I have to do is, I will get the signatures from the Board of Selectmen. They will, we will forward it to the ABCC. The ABCC from the state has to be the ones who sign off on that.
Yes.
You'll get it back from us.
Excellent.
They'll let you know, okay?
Thank you, folks.
Okay, thank you. Have a nice fourth.
I, I don't see anyone here from Escape Estates as of yet, so maybe we can move to the next item on the agenda?
Right, we can put that aside in case somebody does come. Had you any indication that somebody would?
Yeah, oh, I fully anticipated somebody would.
Oh, okay, so, next on the agenda, we have a request from Gordon Holstrom. Gordon, could you come down, please?
Okay, did you sign in earlier? No, I didn't.
Could you please?
I don't.
Good evening, Gordon. I'm Gordon Holstrom. I'm a firefighter, EMT for the town of Sturbridge Fire Department, and I'm on a call basis here.
Madam Chair, in your agenda package, you have a letter and a background resume from Mr. Holstrom, explaining his interest in continuing to serve the town of Sturbridge as a call firefighter upon his sixty, after his sixty-fifth birthday, which under mass general law requires a mandatory retirement. In your agenda package, you have his letter, and he was kind enough to send you folks a resume which detailed his qualifications and experience.
Okay, Gordon, I know you wanted a few minutes to address the board.
Yeah, um, the reason I want to do this is, this has not been a job to me. I've been doing this now for forty-nine years, and it is a hobby. It's not a part-time job. I cannot put paycheck and firefighter together in the same sentence. It won't happen. I've enjoyed doing this. I've gained a lot of respect from a lot of people in this town here, the fire department, as well as area fire departments. And what I'd like to do is, I'd like to be able to continue my services here. I've been working as, also as a fire investigator here in town. I'm certified through the state of Massachusetts, and I want to be able to, be able to utilize that type of background to continue my service here, understanding that there is a, there is a difference in the type of work that I'll be doing at that time, if I am allowed to come back. I can understand that, but I would like to just present it to the point where this is just something that I have enjoyed doing over the years, and I'd like to continue my service. I also look at the fact, too, that sometimes when people do a job over the years and stuff like that, they want to try and go above and beyond. I know what my limitations are, and I don't, I don't exceed those limitations, which I feel myself being much stronger to be able to continue my service to the town of Sturbridge.
Well, Gordon, I want to commend you for your years of service, and you have?
Thank you.
Gone over and above. However, this is kind of a predicament. As you know, it didn't state mandated at sixty-five.
Yes.
And I did hear you mention that you probably wouldn't be doing what you're doing now, which means you'd be, you have the idea you'd be restricted. There's nothing anywhere written about what you would do if you could come back. Plus, this process would entail a town meeting. We do have a town meeting sometime in the fall, but it's, you know, not pinpointed yet, and it requires a town vote to seek special legislation. Now, the state legislature closes in two weeks. They'll finish their business, and they won't reconvene till the fall, and even a request like this would not be a priority at the beginning of their new session. And I know you had mentioned to me when we spoke, was there something that could be an interim thing, but there isn't. There's like no waiver for interim, so I really do think that, as much as you'd like to stay, I really don't see how it's time-wise possible.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else on the board? Priscilla?
No, I think, I, I know we looked at it, and I talked to you also, and we looked at it, and it is, it's time-sensitive. I, I guess I wish you had come or tried for it last year, maybe, a year before, and it might, it would've had, you would've had ample time, as would have the legislature.
Well, I didn't realize how long it was actually going to take.
I know.
I know that, you know, the political end of it and everything else, with all the paperwork and everything else, but I didn't realize it would take this long a period of time.
I get it. I get that.
Yeah, special legislation is, we still haven't even heard, have we, on the liquor license?
That's what, now, six months?
At least six months ago.
Oh, you're going to go down the line?
No, whoever wanted to.
Um, I, my perspective is a little bit different. I agree with our chair. We did have to inquire of town council, you know, what process we would need to do, and it was explained that it needs an active legislature. It needs special legislation by the legislature, as well as town meeting, and so I know that the times might not match up, but we can't, now, I, I don't know exactly how retirement works. He can't, during that time period, take some kind of a leave, or, because I would support him in his desire to stay a call firefighter. I mean, he has many years of service and wisdom that I think the younger officers could benefit from, and if Chief Grasso has a role for him to play, and he's physically fit and able to do it, I would like to see us do what we can to accommodate his desire. So, I don't know, I mean, it does require a, I mean, we've, you know, to be perfectly honest, and I know it's a different situation, but in, in terms of the process, it's somewhat similar. We've gone out on a limb to, for Ocean State Job Lot to have a liquor license. We went to town meeting for them, and we had special legislation, and we did it twice. So the fact that it needs a town meeting and special legislation, to me, is not an obstacle that can't be met.
Madam Chair.
It's the timeframe that's the obstacle.
Is it prohibited, prohibitive, Leon, based on what our council said?
You know, what we've been trying to figure out is, is the mechanics to be able to pull this off. The challenge, the first challenge is that Mr. Holstrom turns sixty-five in September.
Right.
And according to the law, his retirement kicks in at the last day of September.
September, right.
So, you know, when I spoke to the state representative, and, and he didn't discourage the town from taking action.
That's how I read it as well.
You know, it was basically more matter-of-fact, the, the situation exists that currently there is no action by our town meeting, so nothing can be filed at this time. Mary is correct. The chairman is correct. The, um, the legislature will recess at the end of July, out of their formal session. Sometimes you can have actions taken in informal session. The likelihood of a special town meeting being taken before the end of his sixty-fifth birthday month is relatively slow, relatively low, and then they would have to file the legislation, which, and, which may not end up being until next calendar year. So the question would be, I guess the real question, and I don't have an answer for this particular question, is if he retires at the end of September, as he's required to, can he rescind that retirement, August, effective October first, with special act of legislation? I don't know if that's ever been?
That would've been my next question.
I don't know if that's ever been done before. I don't really know the answer to that question, but.
Maybe, I would, I guess I would like to, I would like to do what we can to try to accommodate this officer's desire to continue to serve the town.
Well, I don't think anybody disagrees.
Well, no, I know, but.
And we've been trying, and if we can get more information.
Okay, I just read it, like, when I heard both of you speak, it sounded as though retirement was inevitable, and he couldn't come back. I'd like to see if we can, I mean, we've had, we could call a special town meeting even for just one warrant article. I mean, I think we've had a special town meeting right in here for something very, I still think that that's that big a deal.
Well, it is and it isn't. I mean, the time-wise and the way legislatures, the legislator, legislatives work, I mean, it's just.
Well, we can't force them. I'm saying, at our end, we can hold a town meeting. We don't know if the special legislation will go through. That's kind of out of our hands, but what is in our hands is, is calling the special town meeting to see if the town would support it.
Well, that's true, but even that time-wise, summer vacations in September, even September, when Leon had mentioned, not on this issue, Gordon, on another one, a special town meeting, September isn't any better than school stats, flea market, open houses at schools, you know, it's, I just, you know.
I think we should try.
We should be able to do what we can, but I don't really think the timeframe is going to.
Madam Chair, through you?
Leon.
Mr. Holstrom, did, can you tell me, did you speak to the state representative about this matter?
Yes, I spoke to Todd Smaller, and he told me what you people are explaining to me now, the timeframe required to do that, and at the end of the day, it's going to end up on Governor Baker's desk for his signature on this. I understand now that there is more of a detailed requirement to get this done, but I'm here to ask because, as I say, this is something I've done all my life, and I'd like to be able to continue providing the service to the town here of Sturbridge. I've seen many changes throughout the department, all my years here and everything else, and I've been working with that, the new technology and everything else. I'm even teaching some of the technology here with, with pump operation and everything else, and just fire, fire apparatus use, and I'd like to just be able to pass some of that information on to the new guys coming in. I mean, they go to the academy and everything else, but sometimes the experience overrules what they learn in the academy. They go to the academy, they come back, they're all set to go, but I think just to add a little bit of extra for the experience of a person like myself, I'd like to be able to pass that on to them.
Yeah, Gordon, and that's appreciated, as I mentioned at the beginning, you know, all your years and your knowledge, too, but we still are up against timeframe.
Okay.
I don't know if Leon can find out any more information. I know if we were a civil service community, there is no recourse there for the mandatory retirement, but our only recourse, as we said, is the special legislation.
Okay.
Mike?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, I've read the response from town council, and I saw nothing that says that this is impossible. I mean, it is.
Oh, no, nobody ever says anything's impossible.
So, you know, I So, you know, I, my feeling is, I'd like to give Gordon a chance if that's, if he's, if he really wishes to pursue this, because it's gonna be a lot of, a lot of work on, a lot of paperwork and a lot of hassle.
I'm willing to do anything that needs to be done, as well.
If this is really what Gordon wishes to do, I mean, he used the word passion in his, the memo he gave us tonight and...
It's passion, tradition, and a calling.
Right. So, you know, I'd like, you know, I would like to give you a chance to do it if you can. I, you know, I don't know even if it's possible, but if it's possible, you know, I'm willing to give you a chance.
Thank you very much.
I don't think anyone here would disagree with that. I mean, we're just timeframe. So, Leon, why don't you see what else could be done?
Well, let me check with Representative Smola to see if Gordy has to retire at the end of September, according to the law, if he can, if he is allowed to rescind his retirement. Let me, let me check with the representative and I'll see, because...
Yeah, because, yeah, that's, I mean, it still comes down to the timeframe.
But I mean, even if he's not, that may be questionable whether he can rescind a retirement. I would think that's a steeper hill to climb.
But I think that's the hill that we have to climb.
But I guess my question is, I guess I don't understand why we can't try to hold a special town meeting before the end of September. I guess I don't understand why that is such a hurdle.
I don't think it is the hurdle. I think the hurdle is the legislature.
I know, but well...
After, I mean, the timeframe, once it goes to Boston, is...
I know, but that's...
I mean, we could hold, what do we need, fourteen days' notice for special town meeting?
Right.
Fine, but that's not...
They're not here, no. They're not in session until end September. I think that's where the chair's going with this. I think that's where the concern is on the timeframe.
Oh, I...
We can do the meeting two weeks from now.
I understand that, but that's at least something that is within our, within our control. And then we can try to encourage the legislature during that three-week period in September to entertain that special legislation. It may not happen, I understand that.
I know, Mary, I love your optimism. I really do.
I understand that it may not happen. And then the second recourse is to see if a retirement could be rescinded.
Well, that's...
But I guess what I kind of got the sense of is, we thought scheduling a special town meeting between vacation and this is a big deal, and at least that part of it is not a big deal, the special, at our end.
Well, it's not a big deal, but it does need to be.
It is our end.
What is it?
It's within our power to schedule a special town meeting.
But it's up, but we need a place to have it. That's, I think, where she's going with that.
There's a lot of...
Wait, well, I guess I'd be prepared to make a motion to direct our town administrator to determine whether or not there's a
Benefit.
of time and where we can hold a special town meeting.
She just...
No. What you were talking about was looking into rescinding, talk to, talk, hold on. What Mary just suggested Leon do
A retirement.
was to look into whether or not he could rescind a retirement. I agree. That's separate from what I'm asking. I'm asking our town administrator to look to Tantascwa to see if we can come up with a date for a special town meeting.
Mary, you're missing an important piece here.
Yes.
If he cannot rescind it, okay, suppose, suppose, let's hypothetically, go there.
They're two different things.
Yep, no, they're not. They feed right into you. Supposing Leon finds out within a week or two, okay, because we still have all of August to do a meeting. The legislature's not there.
I get it.
So, if Leon finds out that you cannot rescind it once you put it in, and then you find from the legislature, there's no way this is gonna come forward, then the town meeting is a mute point.
Yeah, because the time...
You gotta, you gotta walk step one before you take step two.
No, Mary, if we have a town meeting...
Talking about two different things.
No, you're not.
If we have a town meeting and it passes, and it would because it'd be...
Twenty people there.
And the special legislation went through before he had to retire. But see, the special legislation won't go through before he has to retire.
Yeah, I know. That's the thing.
That's the problem.
We don't know. It's very slim. It's very, very slim, but it's possible. And if Plan A doesn't work, if Plan A doesn't work, then we can inquire whether he can rescind it. They're two different...
No, they're not.
If we find out he can't...
All right, let's just drop it.
No, if he...
Yeah.
If we find out he can rescind it, we can have, at our next meeting, directive.
Chase is...
Wait a minute, to go forward with a special town meeting. That's fine, but we need the answer to that question first of all. Chase?
I just want to thank you for your years of service and listening to you talk. It was very moving and I really, I really hope you got it figured out and any support that I can offer to you. I'm there to support you.
I appreciate that very much. I guess the one question I have regards to retirement is that many times I hear the term Worcester County Retirement. Since I've been with the Fire Service from the town of Auburn to come out here, I have never been part of the Worcester County Retirement. It's always been a deferred payment plan that I've been on. Does that play a part in this? Is this part of the retirement package that we're talking about?
No idea.
I don't think so. I think that the issue is, is the retirement that they're talking about in the law, under Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-One, Section Twelve through, no, I'm sorry, that's the, those are the, that's the civil service.
Civil service, correct.
The Mass General Law that governs the mandatory retirement is your ability to continue in performing those duties. Whether or not you're getting a quote-unquote pension retirement or not, it refers to the actual performance of those duties on behalf of the municipality. The law was established, as you know, as a line in the sand so that after a certain date, after a certain age, it is, you know, firefighters of that age are not expected to be doing those, that, those duties anymore, regardless of whether or not they could actually physically perform those. And as, you know, when you and I spoke, Gordy, I said, you know, there's no litmus test other than age for this. There's no physical fitness requirements for somebody who's sixty, never mind somebody who's sixty-five and being forced to retire. And there's probably people in their forties and fifties that can, cannot, or probably should not be doing that work anymore. And you got people who might be closer to their seven, the age of seventy, who can work circles around those people who, you know. So, I don't, I think that, I don't think it's an actual, you're gonna get money from your retirement. I think it's a retirement from the actual performing of those duties.
Okay. As far as money goes, I mean, my first ten years in the Fire Service was for no. Then all of a sudden, the state says, we ought to pay them for chasing woods fires. And I get two dollars and fifty cents an hour.
Money well spent.
Long time ago. But see, it's not about money with me.
I understand.
It's about the job itself or the position itself.
We all realize that and appreciate that.
Okay.
But we do need to find, Leon, that answer to that question.
I'll do whatever you folks ask me to do.
Yeah, can a retirement be rescind?
I got a question.
I ask one more for Leon. In your search, I don't know if this is even possible, because can you find out if other communities have done this and what type of a stipulation they put to it? Did they put any?
I don't think I understand.
Like, for example, like, if any other community has allowed sixty-five and on to continue, were they restricted in any particular fashion as to their duties?
I don't know that, I don't know that they were restricted. I can tell you that these are, I won't say that these are a common thing, but they happen almost every year in the legislature. I want to say, when I spoke to Representative Smola, he pointed out that he recently did one, I don't know if it was a year or two ago, for a firefighter in the town of Warren. And I don't believe, I believe the person was an active firefighter. A lot of times you see administrative-duty, you know, firefighters with administrative duties, like a chief or a deputy chief, you know? If a fire chief is building a new fire station in their community and they're close to the end and they wanna, he wants to be there to continue in that process until the new fire station opens, a lot of times the legislature will go through and adopt a, such a requirement to allow that person to continue past their sixty-fifth birthday. But I don't know, I'm not sure how to answer your question, but I can see if I can ask the legislature if there are such bills that are passed that further restrict the type of work that would be done.
Because my, instead of holding this up at any other point, I think that if you get all the questions answered, then you know what to put at the town meeting, because I'm sure it's a question that would come up.
I've got a question going off of Mary Dalling, Sleckman Dowling's suggesting that we hold a town meeting before the end of September. Could, could we find out from town council if holding a town meeting and with a positive town meeting vote before mandatory retirement kicks in has the effect of estoppel or stopping the mandatory requirement process?
I would say absolutely not, because, because mass, because town meeting vote can't change Mass General Law.
But it sets in process, the process of granting, it's like if you file with the court, it could stop the time limits on a particular...
It suspends it.
It suspends it. That's, that's, does the retirement go into suspension? That's a good term for it.
I mean, I could, I could ask.
You can ask.
Yeah.
Never hurts to ask.
But that's, that's, when Mary, when Sleckman Dowling was talking, that's, came through my head, is, well, this might suspend the whole process until the legislature can act.
Okay, Mary?
Yeah, and, and, thank you, Mike. What goes hand-in-hand with that is, since Todd Smola has encountered this, and it's not an unusual process, from the time something is passed at town meeting, assuming it is with a positive vote, what is the typical length of time between that and when the special legislation is passed, when it's time-sensitive like this?
So, I did speak to the representative about that.
Okay.
I wish I had better news for you, because, I mean, what happens is, is that once town meeting takes its action, presumably the next day, we can notify the state legislature through a certified certificate from the town clerk's office stating that this article had passed town meeting. At that point, the legislature, the legislator has to bring it to their council. A bill must be filed. It has to be assigned to a hearing, to a committee. The committee has to hold a hearing. It has to go through the full process before it can be brought before the legislature for a vote. It is compounded by the fact that the legislature will be in recess at the end of July. So, the only time that this could be done in a formal session would be starting in January first, after January first. The question would be, could it be done in informal session? I think the answer to that question is probably yes. However, the rules of informal session in the legislature are such that any person can stop it by just letting the House leadership know. And then it has to go through both chambers, of course, in informal session, then brought before the governor for his consideration. So, there is, there is quite a bit of steps. It's not just pass town meeting and then it gets done...
I understand, but like, since they've done it before, I guess my question is a little more concrete. How long did it take?
Many months, yeah, many months.
And it's been, as Priscilla said, six months already on the liquor license. And what other special legislation did it?
It took you a year and a half to get the liquor license for Ocean State Joblot. Now, I'm not gonna, I'm not saying that because I don't know when that, when that was delivered to the legislature for their consideration.
That's all, I mean, we'll do what we can.
I am not disheartened by any of this statement here, and whatever I can do, I'm willing to do it. I'll give you my card here tonight so you can call me at any time. I'm willing to do whatever I can, so I'd like to be able to stay.
Are you praying, Matt?
But I want to thank you all for your time tonight.
Oh, no problem, Gordon. Thank you for all your time.
Okay. Please let me know if there's anything I can do at all, and we'll see if we can try to move this thing forward.
Okay. Have a nice fourth.
Thank you all very much. Everybody stay safe out there, enjoy the holiday.
Yes, you too.
I think if we can get Todd and Ann Goby to support it, an informal session, to try to push it along.
Neither the state rep or the state senator is going to have much in the way of an opinion. They're gonna be looking for the town. They're gonna know how the selectmen...
I get it. I know, that's why I said, the first step is us holding a special town meeting. But assuming we're willing to do that, hold on, Mary, hold on.
It's like putting your socks on after shoes.
What's that?
It's like putting your socks on after shoes.
I disagree. I'm sorry, I disagree, because we can take some action. The other way, it's, it's like going around in a circle. It's like, we can't do anything because of special legislation. I get that, but he just showed us an avenue through an informal session. I know it's, I know it's slim, but he's looking for any possible window.
Oh, yes, I know.
Okay, so, my question to Leon is, assuming we have a special town meeting in August and we get a positive vote, can we approach Ann Goby and Todd Smola to support presenting that bill in informal session? Can we ask for their support? That's, that's what I'm saying. Because without them, it's gonna totally stall. We need their support. Why are you looking at so confounded? That was like very straightforward. If we don't have their support...
It's very straightforward. You could ask that question without a town meeting.
No.
Why do you need a town meeting?
Because that means the town has done what it can. They're gonna come back to us and say, well, did you have a special town meeting? The first step is in our hands, not their hands.
Mary.
We have the first step.
Mary, you can also say, we are planning, we are planning a special town meeting regarding this. Let me finish. And say, if we pass this in town meeting, would you support us? You can get two things running at one time.
Exactly. That's what I just directed Leon to do. Would you ask Ann Goby and Todd Smola to support us if we have a special town meeting and we get an affirmative vote? That's exactly what I just said.
Okay, it didn't sound that way to me.
Well, I apologize if I wasn't clear.
They've always supported the town in anything.
They have, yes.
Well, I can answer your question. I can ask that question.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much for your time.
Have a good one.
Madam Chair, I don't see anybody here from State Estates, so...
Gentlemen, ladies there too.
We are gonna be moving quickly through the remaining items, so if they don't show up, then we'll cancel that appointment.
Be nice if they showed up when they're supposed to show up.
Yeah.
Well, I didn't give them a specific time, but...
No, but I mean...
Well, they came last meeting.
They did know that the meeting started at six thirty.
That was the father.
Madam Chair, under town administrator's update, I only have two items. One, I would ask the Board of Selectmen to approve the award for heating oil and propane per the regional procurement for those items done by CMRPC. We do heating fuel oil at two fifty-five a gallon and propane at one sixty-nine per gallon. And I would ask that the Board of Selectmen approve both of those and to authorize the town chairman of the Board of Selectmen to sign it on behalf of the town.
Okay, is someone willing to make that motion?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, five to nothing.
Madam Chair, this time of the year, I typically give you a six-month review of where we are and our goals and objectives. I emailed to you all, or I'm sorry, I gave them to you in your agenda packages, a goal planning document, which I'm gonna go through, the nine goals that have been established for the town for two thousand and eighteen. Goal number one is bring forward the rezoning of the Route Fifteen to, rezoning of Route Fifteen to promote development. You will know that one of the items that we did this, earlier this year, late last year, we applied for a grant to have CMRPC do a Route Fifteen corridor study. I know a number of you attended their public meeting that we had over at the Public House. I think it was earlier this year, maybe it was late last fall.
It was this year.
It was this year?
It was this year.
Yeah. I received today a copy of the printed report, which I emailed to you folks this afternoon. I will have it tentatively on the agenda for CMRPC to come and talk to the Board of Selectmen at your next meeting. I'm waiting for confirmation that they can be at our next meeting. So, I just wanted to share with you that we've made some good progress on that goal.
Could we have a printed copy too, please?
Thank you.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Thank you, Mary. I was gonna ask for it.
I was going dizzy reading on my phone.
Yeah, maybe just write myself a note here. Yes, I will have that in your boxes before the end of this week. Goal number two was establish a strategy for recreational marijuana. Well, as you know, our original strategy was to work to bring forward art...
Well, as you know, our original strategy was to work to bring forward articles at this annual town meeting to ban that quite didn't work out the way that we had hoped. However, step two of that, based upon the memo that I had given to you folks, I don't know, maybe a month and a half to two months ago, was that if it were to fail, that Gene Bubon and I would work with the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen to create a bylaw to address recreational marijuana sales in the town. As you know, we are planning a special town meeting in the fall to, to address that issue. We are still working very diligently on that, that issue. Goal number three was working to implement the McGilpin Road water line grant. As you know, last year, we were successful in getting an earmark in the state budget to the tune of $75,000 to do some preliminary studies. We did complete the Phase 1. I think that was presented to you folks at your last meeting. And we are awaiting the results of the test boring study. Now, you'll be happy to know that the test boring study was done by tie and bond last week. We are awaiting the results of that, and I should hopefully have that before your next meeting. And if I do, I'll bring those test boring results to you at our next meeting. So, we've made good progress on, on that grant as well. Continue working on the building, public building studies for the senior center, public safety complex, and the DPW. I am still awaiting the results of our space needs analysis for the public safety complex. However, we did go out to bid for the new building space for the senior center. I am awaiting the bid responses. The bid opening for that will be, I believe it's in August. I think it's August 12th. Don't hold me to that, but I think it's in mid-August. Then I will present the results to that back to you folks for a strategy, hopefully by the end of the summer, to move forward on those goals. Working on the underground utility study for Route 20, the town administrator and the town planner did meet with Greg Morse, with the three utility companies to request a planning meeting. We did that planning media, meeting, I think, two weeks ago. They are in the process of giving us a quote as to what it would cost to fund these studies, to, you know, engineer the underground utilities for both of those. And then I will bring that request back to you folks. We'll need to bring that forward to a town meeting for funding. So, we are, we had a nice meeting with the utility companies. They were very frank in saying that it would be challenging. It could be somewhat costly, but they promised to get us back, get back to us with a result on the cost to do the study. Goal number six was the establishment of Affordable Housing Committee and to prepare a study on housing data. After several begging and pleading publicly, we did appoint four out of the five members of the Affordable Housing Partnership. We've held their initial meeting. They've organized. They've chosen a chair and a vice chair of the committee. And they are excited about the opportunity to do this work. And hopefully, they're going to be working diligently over the next six months to move forward on the study on housing data. That's imperative that we get that study done, because as you know, it will be time for our update of the master plan, and the housing data study is an important component of the update of our housing, I'm sorry, of our, of our town's master plan. So, we are working diligently on that. Goal number seven is looking at the hours of town offices as a way to provide night hours for residents. Madam Chair, as you announced, we implemented those change in hours for a six-month trial basis effective today. So, we will see how that goes. And I know the Board of Selectmen had asked for public feedback. We are going to do a very easy, quick survey that we will hand out to people as they come into town hall, asking them how they enjoy, how they like the new hours. So, I will report that back, back to you on a periodic basis. Goal number eight was supporting the Recreation Committee on the Recreational Field Project. Well, as you know, at the last town meeting, it didn't go as well as the Recreation, Recreation Committee was, was hoping for. I have been working, though, with Annie and Barbara and Greg on the project. We are still working with Annie and Greg on two other items at the request of the Selectmen. I believe it was Selectmen Supernat who had asked at a previous meeting of the board to get some further data and to get some peer review. We are, oh, and also the feasibility for the shepherd deed, to see what, what feasibility that would be. We are looking into that. I've asked town council to begin a legal review, to see what would be required there. And Greg is working with some engineers, with Annie, to see if we can't get some better numbers on the ledge removal. That was the request that, that came out of the Selectmen's request. And then the last goal that we had was pursuing age and dementia-friendly designation for the town of Sturbridge. We did, we did seek funds for a memory cafe, which was funded by the, by the state, and we began operation about, I think it was, I think it was three weeks ago, we held, we held our first memory cafe. We are still in the process of researching the other means of meeting the age and dementia-friendly communities, and I hope to bring that forward to the Board of Selectmen sometime in the next couple of months. Those were the goals established by the Board of Selectmen this, this year. That is my report. I'll be happy to take any questions or comments, and if you folks are satisfied with that, I'll be happy to hear any feedback, positive or negative, to, to that extent.
No, it's a good explanation. Any comment?
I just, I just have a couple of questions. There's no comment, no negative comment. I just have a question. Recently, I saw in the paper last week that the Attorney General delayed the onset of when they had to have the marijuana bylaw in place. Does that affect us any?
I think that what the Attorney General's Office said that they would be willing to do is they would be willing to entertain, depending on when your town meeting was, a continuation or an extension of a moratorium if the town, for some reason, couldn't find a way to adopt a bylaw in time. So, so I think it's incumbent upon the town to take positive action, to meet the bylaw, to meet the moratorium that we've established. But let's say for argument's sake, and this is my hypothetical, you know, example. Let's say for argument's sake, we went to town meeting with a bylaw in the fall, and there was significant-
Change.
Discussion. I will use the word discussion. And a bylaw couldn't be adopted with a majority. I think at that point, the town could probably petition, and might be successful in petitioning, to have the, to have our moratorium continued until our next annual town meeting, which would be the following June.
Okay.
So, we would essentially get a good five and a half months of, of an extended. But we would, I think it's incumbent upon us to show good faith in preparing and bringing forward a, a bylaw to, to help regulate that.
I just have two more questions. One is, who is the chair of the Housing Committee?
The Housing Committee is chaired now by Ed Neal.
Okay. And the vice chair?
Danielle LaRiviere.
Okay, thanks.
I hope I didn't butcher her name.
One other, Leon, we had talked about, I don't know that we put it on the agenda for this year, but I think it was like a two-year project, the trash situation, the-
Yes.
That's still on the radar, right?
It, it's on the radar. We did apply for a grant from the DEP to help us with our study. It didn't, um, I don't believe we're still operating under that grant, but I will check into that, and I'll, I'll get back to you folks.
Because I, I just had, I had somebody ask me that, and I honestly forgot about it myself. Someone asked me about a week or so ago if we ever did anything with that, and I said I would get back.
Yeah, I will, I know that when we brought it forward to the Selectmen at the annual retreat, it didn't rise to the level-
Right, right.
-to be one of our town goals, but we haven't forgotten about it.
It was from last year. It was like a two, it was like a two-year process. It wasn't something that was going to be done in a year.
Yeah, it, it's a lengthier process, but I don't mind busting it off.
There's no rush on that answer. Just, just curious, that's all.
Yep.
Thanks.
Any other goals?
Yeah, as, as far as the underground utility study, I, I would just suggest contacting the Mass DOT District Utility Engineer and bring Mass DOT in on, on the discussions of, of that whole process of underground utilities. It is a state highway, and I think coordination with the DOT is, would be imperative to having, you know, a successful study and getting it, something that we can use out of the study.
Yeah, I think, I think that is probably Phase 2 of our little initial, initial phase here. I think Phase 1 is, you know, getting the three utility companies on board, making sure that they can give us a quote to do this. We may find, I mean, if they come back and the quote to do the study is cost prohibitive to the point where you folks don't want to move forward with it, for whatever reason, then I don't have to bother Mass DOT. However, I don't anticipate that that will be the case. I anticipate bringing forward a number and then working with all the movers and shakers to make sure that everyone's on board. But thank you. I will make a note of that and put that in our, on our radar screen.
Yeah, just, and just, just a note from a meeting that I went to last Thursday, the MMA Policy Committee on Public Works, Transportation, and Public Utilities. The guest speaker was, uh, this, well, a couple of people, the secretary and, and another person from, that talked about solid waste and recycling and issues with China on recycling and all that whole mess. And they are working on the solid waste plan for the entire state. And that, you know, the Selectmen should be aware that, that that, the plan that's in effect now will probably see some, some changes. You know, there was a lot of questions going back and forth, which is better for recycling, having curbside pickup, or having, having, like, we have a transfer station. And the, the recycling product from a transfer station is much higher quality and probably can meet-
Which means cleaner.
Meet, yeah, much cleaner. I mean, what's coming out of our materials recovery plants, they call them MRFs, are, you know, it's contaminated to about 15% right now, and the state's been requiring them to reprocess everything, and they can get down to about 3% contamination. And China requires less than one-half of 1% contaminated material. So, we, we've got a big problem the way we handle recyclables.
Nationwide.
Nationwide. And the whole country does. And so, we discussed whether or not they could get to that, they call it the China Sword Policy. It's, yeah, yeah. Ironic, but they, they have the sword over us as far as recycling. And we, we, if, if the entire nation was using transfer stations, we probably can meet that half of 1% contamination in the future. So, it's, it's a tough situation with solid, solid waste, so-
I agree. It is a very tough situation.
What we do, we should, you know, we have to keep, keep in touch with what's going on statewide and nationally as far as solid waste goes. And whether curbside pickup is the best, it may not be the best environmentally for the town.
Okay. Any other question, comment on the goals? Okay, old business. Priscilla?
No.
Case? Mike?
No.
Mary?
I just have one thing. I know at our last meeting, or it might have been the meeting before the last one, we passed on having a Board of Selectmen representative at the farmer's market, saying, you know, we think residents are mostly there to purchase things. But I've kind of thought about it a little more. I have gone to the farmer's market, and I personally think it would be a good idea if we did man the table for one week, since so many other, you know, ask, so many other groups from the town are manning it. So, I would like us to rethink that, and I am willing to be the person that does it for one farmer's market if it's okay.
Well, we can let them know what other groups are doing it.
Leon would know best, but they're pretty full.
I don't know the answer to that specific question, but I can, if the board is willing, I can ask the committee to give me the dates that are still open, and I will go back to the board.
I just know that, I just know a lot of the dates are already full.
Pick one.
Or, or let them get back to us to let us know when. I don't know if anybody else wanted to do it. I don't want to do it. I mean, I'm willing to do it by myself, but it's from 10 to 12, 10 to 2. Somebody else wanted to do it, you know, 10 to 12, 12 to 2, we could split it up, or I can just do it. I don't know.
We'll see what dates there are.
But it's very well attended and-
Because I know some boards, some of the boards also declined.
Declined. I know, but some, some did not decline, and I don't know if, do you know any of the ones that, you're nodding, so I think maybe you know.
I know that Planning Board declined at this time.
Planning Board declined.
Yeah, but there's live music.
Yeah.
And there's ice cream in the morning.
Depends on the weather.
I just think it's a gesture to show that we, we support it. I think Kevin's doing a fantastic job on-
And we do support it.
I think the committee has done a fantastic job as well.
And the committee's there, and so, I'm, that's my only old business.
And my daughter's enjoyed it two Sundays in a row. She-
And just find out from Kevin what the open dates are. I would not be able to do it the first Sunday of August, but-
I'll get the dates. I'll email it to the entire board, and if anybody can do it, just let me know.
All right, awesome.
It is a lot of fun, and I will tell you, the crowds have been magnificent, and the vendors, I've been speaking to a lot of the vendors, even ones who do farmer's markets in other communities, and I asked them to compare it to ours, and people are so excited for the farmer's market in Sturbridge. It is really, really doing an outstanding job.
Of course, it's also one of the very few on a Sunday. Most of them are Saturdays.
Yeah, most of them are on Saturday.
Yeah. Did you sneeze or cough?
No, I coughed. It's, I got a dry throat. I need some, some, some refreshments.
Okay.
No other old business.
Okay, for old business, do we ever hear any response back from Charter after the lady took all our concerns and everything, and is going to get back with answers?
On that gentleman Albert, Alfred Menard, Al Menard's comments?
Yeah, well, I mean, and I comments and question.
No, I, I, in fact, Charter was one of the companies that went to our utility meeting regarding the underground utilities, and I reminded them nicely that we are still awaiting a response on several of their, several of our concerns.
Yeah, because that was people's second shoes in-
I'll follow up with them again formally. Yeah, something in writing might be appropriate.
Yeah, that's all I had.
I will.
New business? Priscilla?
No.
Yes, um, some of us attended the MMA Worcester County Selectmen's Conference last Thursday and, or Thursday before, and we offered to host in Sturbridge in September for the next one, so we hope we have a good turnout.
Do you have a date?
September 20th, I believe. The 20th, yeah, the 20th, yep.
And it's usually in the evening. It's, it's a Thursday.
All right. So, it's a good thing you told me that. September 20th, at what time?
I think it was 7 o'clock or 6:30.
Something like that. And they provide, I think they provide money too for refreshments. They, if, if you approve, we'll, we'll email them, and they give us money for buying refreshments for, because they had sandwiches and stuff like that, because it was early evening, early supper time kind of thing.
Yeah, I see no problem with it.
I don't see a problem with it, but I will check to make sure that we don't have another weird event scheduled for that night.
Can you let me know?
When was the one you went to?
It was at the mansion?
Yeah.
Oh, the A's Water.
Waters Mansion in Milbury.
Oh, Milbury, A's Water Mansions, yeah. Me and Eric. Who's the president of the group now?
Proventure.
Diane Forlester?
Diane, yeah.
Can you let me know, Leon, when you know?
I, I will know at the conclusion of this meeting.
Oh, and I don't need to know that fast.
Because Colleen has given me her, the calendar for room reservations.
Oh, okay.
And as long as it's not reserved, I'll, I'll book it right tonight.
We'll need this room.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, no, I'll book, if it's not reserved, I'll book it tonight.
Okay.
We had hosted one.
A long time ago with Mary Radesky.
No, even before that.
But she also did one when she was the representative.
Shortly after the town hall was renovated.
All right.
So, we did a more recent one with Mary then?
Yeah, they all drooled over it. Okay, any other new business? Okay, any other new business, Chase?
No, no other new
Mike?
No.
Mary?
No.
And I have none. Correspondence, Mary, you have?
Correspondence stated June 8th from Charter Communications regarding upcoming changes effective on or after July 1st, 2018. Alampusa is ceasing distribution of El Garage on Latino View. June 8th, I don't know if I crucified the pronunciation on that, but in any event, June 8th, the MIIA notification that the town will receive additional participation credits of $15,633. June 20th, correspondence from a Sturbridge Police media release, notification that Lieutenant Earl Dessert has completed the FBI National Academy. June 12th, Tri Valley, request from Tri Valley for additional financial support from Sturbridge and other communities. And June 25th, from KP Law, an appreciation letter for reappointment as town council.
Okay, I'm sure the other board would agree to send a congratulatory letter to Lieutenant Dessert.
Yes, absolutely.
Leon, could you write something up? In third grade, people have trouble between Dessert and Dessert.
I know, two S's make you fat. I know that.
Oh, no, two S's makes it taste better.
Does it? But I didn't know with the proper name, if perhaps it was spelled differently.
I know, you never know with names, not unless you follow the rules. Okay, we have approval of minutes then, we have minutes from June 18th. Leon, I had only one little typo that I hadn't seen before, which brought up another one, because it's on page six, but the pages aren't numbered, so I had to count the pages.
I will, I will take that up with the person who did the minutes.
They're wonderful minutes.
No, go ahead.
Up at the top, the, the motion there, town administrator, at the end, you're always missing from not.
I'm sorry, oh, yes, I see it, yep, okay. Yep. I got it.
And Rebecca, I mean, you've got everything in it. Isn't it easier just to say, Tech Tree Warden's report filed and listed?
I think that all town business is really important, and the general public has the right to know what's going on at these meetings. Not everyone watches like I do.
Yeah, but they can request the reports. I mean, it's just a lot of work when you have that many department heads in. You know, I don't want, I don't want, we don't want to wear you out. Anybody else have any questions? Is there a motion to approve with that small correction?
So move.
Just a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. And then we have the June 25th minutes. Notice the difference?
People, the meeting was only, it was only 20 minutes long.
I know, I'm just kidding. Did anybody have any corrections or, okay, is there a motion to prove is written?
Motion to prove is written.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, citizens forum? Just here to, just here to observe?
Observe.
Now which badge you going for?
Citizenship in the community?
Nice.
It's one of the required badges for Eagle Scout.
Yeah.
Yeah, you've been in it quite a while.
What'd you think of the meeting? Can I put you on the spot?
Sort of.
What's that?
Sort of.
Did you like the meeting she's asking you? You said sort of? Are you ready to be a Selectman?
No, I
How about a town administrator?
I remember when you first got it, because Liam was in the group. Liam dropped out. How was the movie the other day?
The movie?
Didn't you go to the movie the other day, Jurassic Park? No? No. I thought Liam said that was you and mine. Okay, so picked a good meeting, it was short.
Yeah.
Have a nice fourth.
The purpose of your community badge is to, to encourage engagement of young people in, in town government, so, and that's, that's something that we as Selectmen really would like to encourage. So you and, and other Scouts, you know, keep up, you know, paying attention to, it's not just tonight that you want to pay attention to what we're doing here. You want to do that throughout, so, so that we don't go astray. Okay, you've got to watch us.
Madam Chair?
Hold on one minute.
You can, you can take the motion.
Well, I have something to say about some of the business.
Oh.
Tell me to be quiet.
I love it.
It never worked before, it's not going to work now, so
Hey, just ask Charlie, he'd tell you the same thing. The Dowdy Road, I noticed in your write-up, they said they were, it was kind of seeking relief from when.
Yes.
That's actually a sore bylaw voted on by the town.
Correct.
So I don't see how the Board of Selectmen could, you can't bypass a bylaw. It would have to be changed by town meeting.
I will, I was told by both Greg and by Barbara that that had, that, that has, that requirement has been waived before. Not that the assessment was waived, but that the prepayment of the assessment had been broken up over a period of time.
Yeah, and on that, though, could you get the specific?
I will, yeah.
Because the one that's given the example of, that Jalbert one, that was 2005, and that was under the 2001 bylaw, where the rate was 60% of the bediment, but in 2006, we changed it to a flat 7,500. So if it's been waived, can you find the specific ones?
I will do my best, yes.
If and
Yep.
They ever come in?
Yep.
Okay, I just, Priscilla?
Before we finish, I just have one item to say, and I forgot to do it under announcements, but I'll do it now. To wish the chair and her husband a happy 50th anniversary.
Oh, thank you.
Congrats.
Yeah.
It's a quite, it's quite an accomplishment. It really is.
It's been good years.
That's good.
See, that Charlie didn't say that.
I chose well. I know you're kidding. I chose well. Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll second the motion. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay.
Stay cool.
Yeah.
Try.
Get to walk out in the humidity.
Thank you for coming. Nice to see you.
Yes.
Good luck, okay?
Gentlemen, since there weren't any changes, I just sign this one.